You're watching GCTV, Community Access Table Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the 199th regular meeting of the Greenfield City Council at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, Greenfield. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time, and the recorder is. So we will do -- the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Sun?
Here.
Counselor Burson?
Here.
Counselor Alice?
Here.
Counselor Pythrum?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
My turn.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
Present.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Mass?
Here.
President Renault?
Here.
Vice President Ricketts?
Here.
Counselor Stempel?
Present.
Madam President, you have a question.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to suspend the rules of procedure?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion carries. Before we start down, because the rules of procedure are suspended, I want to address a couple things. Last night, for anybody here, I think everybody here probably knows, but last night was the public hearing portion of the meeting, so that's where we took input from the public. Because our agenda is so big, the meetings were split up in two. So tonight, we're not going to have any public hearings, or public comment, or any input. It's just going to be the folks behind the rails who are speaking. But I did want to recognize the instructional assistants who came to last night's meeting, and I know that some of you are here for tonight's meeting. So many of you came up, and came to the meeting, and spoke about the funding of the contract. And I, you know, and if any other counselor wants to say anything to that, I want, you know, of course, I'll recognize you, but I do want to say that I know that we all really appreciate the work that you do, and we appreciate the time that you've been taking to come to the meetings. On the agenda, there is no -- there's no motion to approve the funding for the contract. We do need that from the mayor's office. We can't make that happen until we have an order. We can't create orders for funding, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as well. But I, again, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I'm pretty sure I know that everyone on this council will approve that contract as soon as we get it. So I don't know if any other counselors wanted to talk to any of the public comment, or about any of the IAs, or to speak to them. There's a couple of them here. Counselor Sun?
All I know is you do a great job, because my sister went through what you're teaching now. And without you as a teacher and everything, I don't know where she'd be right now. So you do a great job, and couldn't ask for anything better for those type of kids.
So thank you again, and thank you for coming. I see that some of you are here at the meeting tonight. Okay, so does anybody else have anything before we start moving down the agenda? All right. Counselor Dolan, the mayor's veto, I'm going to give it to you because it's your resolution.
So it's fairly clear that this is not going to have the votes to pass, so I was going to withdraw it. Do I need to read it anyway?
No, you can just state that you withdraw it.
I would like to withdraw.
Madam President, I think we have to act on a veto. I think we have to take a vote to override whether or not...
So our parliamentarian did unfortunately, not unfortunately, but did tell us that Counselor Mass is right, we do have to take action on it. So I'm sorry, I thought you could just withdraw it.
So that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council, uh, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Move that it be ordered that a resolution requesting compensation from CVS Health Corporation for SAG corporations' role in the opioid addiction crisis in the city of Greenfield, previously voted on by the city council on October 16, 2019, and vetoed by the mayor on October 28, 2019, is hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, so this is, we would need nine votes to approve this. Does anybody have any discussion? Counselor Stempel?
I just want to thank Counselor Dolan for bringing this forward. I understand that we are in litigation with CVS currently, and so that's why some folks thought it wasn't necessary to support this. However, I think it is important that we, as the legislating body in this community, do take a stand against what's been going on in our community in terms of opioid crisis. I shocked myself by voting for this, because I originally didn't think it was our place, but if not our place, then who? And so I just want to reiterate my thanks for bringing this forward, and having this candid conversation among colleagues, and let's continue these conversations.
Counselor Alice?
I just think it's important to say that not supporting this particular resolution is not suggestive of someone not supporting the fight against the opioid crisis in our community. Because there are many causes for it, there's many things that have happened, there are many people who are responsible for over-prescribing. There is a lot that is, that goes with the crisis that we have, and I think that it would be inappropriate to think that if you don't support this particular resolution, that you don't support the fight against the opioid crisis. And I want to make that distinction. Thank you.
Counselor Sun?
I think we should table it right now.
Counselor Sun, I believe that if we table, the time would go by, and, I mean, you can make a motion to table, but I believe in that would be the same as just letting it die. Counselor Burson?
As Counselor Alice has indicated, this is a multifaceted problem. Notwithstanding it being a multifaceted problem, The Washington Post's incredible investigation in connection with the role of the pharmaceutical companies in the United States, in connection with fostering, abetting, encouraging, and most of all, profiting from the opiate crisis addiction, or whatever particular nomenclature you want to put on it, is overwhelming. The Washington Study, The Washington Post Study, particularized, if you can believe this, every single tablet that was ever produced in the country, billions of tablets, and traced those tablets to pharmacies all over the country, and when you look at the numbers of tablets that came into this area, apparently through CVS, the number of dispensed drugs just so exceeded the population that there appears to be culpability. So this doesn't become choosing CVS as one of the, one player in this. It really is a designation and a connection between what the pharmaceutical industry did to the people of the United States and this community. So although there may not be the votes to overcome this veto, I suggested a provision whereby if this corporation paid monies as a result of this litigation, and they will pay monies. What will happen is it will collapse into the same thing that occurred in the tobacco litigation, which was a huge pot of money, billions of dollars that was dispensed. Whether that's going to be enough, I don't, I don't, I don't know. But I for one feel that bringing this to the attention of the public by a public declaration is really, really important, and I don't think the mayor's hands are, or the future mayor's hands, are tied by this resolution. And it is the same kind of public health issue in connection with vaping, and other matters where local communities have acted ahead of the state, and certainly ahead of the federal government. So this, I agree with Counselor Dolan's initial thinking, that a statement should be made and go forth in connection with the, what has been done to the people of this community.
Counselor Gilmore?
Move that we call the question.
Okay, all in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Point of order. Would you mind clarifying, a yes vote upholds the original vote, and a no vote goes with the veto?
So yes, a no vote upholds the mayor's veto, and a yes vote upholds the, it would override if there's nine people voting yes. So do a roll call vote?
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Pythrum?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Stempel?
Yes.
Okay, the override, I mean, I'm sorry, the veto remains. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, Madam President. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number FY19-111. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, ordered that the sum of $550,000 be appropriated to hire the architect and engineering firms to develop the plans for a new fire station. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $550,000 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept, and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to be used to reduce the appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the May 22, 2019 City Council Annual Budget Meeting.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee? Sorry, this is just to take it from the table. So this is non-debatable. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, the motion is taken from the table. So the report from committee?
This received a unanimous, which was four votes, positive recommendation from Ways and Means. We did not spend a lot of time discussing it because, well, we've spent a lot of time discussing it already.
Counselor Sun?
I'd like to call the question, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Counselor Wheeler?
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number The sum of $460,000 be appropriated for the replacement of the heating system in Green River Schools. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $460,000 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept, and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to be used to reduce the appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the July 17, 2019 City Council Meeting.
Okay, so this is to take from the table. Could you have a show of hands, all in favor of taking this from the table?
I'm up two.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, all in favor of keeping it on the table? It stays on the table. Counselor Wheeler?
That the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number FY20-011. Approves repurposing in the amount of $300,000 of previously authorized for repair of the Maplebrook culvert for INI, inflow and infiltration evaluation and repairs, which was tabled at the September 18, 2019 City Council Meeting.
All in favor of taking it from the table, raise your hand. It is off the table. And all those opposed? No, okay. It is off the table, I remain with what I said. Counselor Mass?
I had asked for this to be tabled to the election, because I wanted to know, this money was originally for the purpose of dedicated to the INI, or the Maplebrook culvert issues underneath the fire station, and we didn't quite know whether or not the library was going to pass, and whether or not we'd be building a new fire station. It's pretty clear that we are building a new library and a new fire station, and I think that money should remain in place until we have a full estimate on what the costs and needs of the fire station are, and for that reason, I'd recommend a no vote.
Counselor Wheeler, report from committee, and then Counselor Gilmore.
I wanted to report that the committee, which voted before Counselor Mass was able to arrive, was four to zero in favor of a positive recommendation, and that Director Warner has spoken repeatedly about the need to address the consent order really as soon as possible, and he really emphasized that, and it got through to me.
Counselor Gilmore?
I just think that we've already been delaying this for several months. I know that everybody in the DPW has been sitting on the edge of their seats waiting for this money to come through, because this work really needs to get done, whether we at the table see it that way or not. I think that we need to trust our city employees and the advice that they give us, and Marlowe has made it very clear that this is a top priority for him, and I think that we need to give him the respect that he is due for all of the time that he's spent working with us and making us understand. He's been very patient with us, and I don't know if I could sit there with a straight face right now. So I would recommend that all of my colleagues vote in favor of repurposing these funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Stempel?
I've just been speaking to a lot of other communities in the Pioneer Valley who have not invested, or began investing, in their own INI. Well, we won't say issues, we'll say circumstances. And so we've been consistently investing in this over, I believe, the last five years I've served, or four years I've served, and so I encourage my colleagues to continue chipping away at this, so that we're not putting ourselves behind the eight ball, like I'm seeing a lot of other communities putting themselves in that jeopardy right now. So $300,000 to, I'm, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking at millions more on this issue, so I agree that we should keep chipping away a little at a time, so this way we're not then stuck with a huge bill later. So please, 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 $300,000 for a bigger, more expensive issue. It's the smart way to do it. Thank you.
Counselor Sun?
All I know is this gets taken care of, the fire station can get moved much faster. And I just think that we need to get it going as quick as possible, so the groundwork can get taken care of, and so we can get a modern fire station.
Counselor Mass?
I believe Counselor Sun is incorrect. I think this has the exact opposite effect. I think it's taking money away from the fire station project. It's taking money away from the prep project for the fire station. We're going to have to appropriate to the fire station, so this is, the Maplebrook issues underneath the fire station are still going to have to be resolved. So you're repurposing money that's already been appropriated for one use, that we are going to have to use, and putting it towards another use that might be a good use, but that is not required, at least not immediately. And so what I would say is what you're going to do, this is very different than when we repurpose funds for something that we know we're not going to do anymore. We say we're going to buy a truck, and then we decide we're not going to buy the truck, and we repurpose that money and put it to buying a different piece of equipment. We put money towards a building project, and that building project stops, and we take that money back and repurpose it to a different building project. This is taking money from something that we need to give it to something else that we want, and, or maybe that we need as well. But if we were not going, if, whether or not we were building a fire station made no difference in the minds of my colleagues, I don't know why you went along with tabling it during the summer. We could have just voted it then.
Counselor Gilmore?
So I understand that this is money that is being taken from one project that still needs to continue forward, but it's, I think it's been made very clear to us that taking care of these, the consent order that has been generated because of the INI is a more pressing priority for us right now. So even though we are going to have to put this money back into the Maplebrook culvert later, I still think that it is wise for us to go along with the recommendation of our DPW director, and I would encourage my colleagues to also vote yes on this.
Counselor Wheeler?
I would just say that the, that a consent order from DEP, the number of pages of which is like half my packet, is probably the definition of a need, so I would emphasize what Counselor Gilmore said, that it's really, really important to shift our priorities here, because they have shifted.
Vice President Ricketts?
I think we have learned a lot throughout the year about this project, but last night, it was really brought home to us about deadlines and such. And so I know that everyone here wasn't able to make it last night, but I think it was an important conversation that we had with DPW, so I am voting yes on this.
Counselor Burson, just for everybody to know, I'm trying to get to the folks who haven't spoken, and then I'm coming back to the folks who have spoken. Counselor Burson, you haven't spoken, so that's why I'm calling on you now.
I'd call the question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain? Okay. Roll call vote? Yep, so this is on the final motion, because we already voted to take it off the table.
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice? Counselor Pythrum?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
The motion carries. Counselor Wheeler, page 37.
Thank you, Madam President. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number FY20-52. In accordance with Article 3-1, Provision D of the Home Rule Charter as amended, request that the following ordinance be enacted: That the annual salary for the mayor shall be a minimum of $105,000 effective immediately. And in accordance with Article 2-4:2 of the Home Rule Charter as amended, request that each town, excuse me, city councillor receive an annual salary of $15,000, effective on January 15, 2021. Further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield, which was tabled at the October 16, 2019 City Council Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is taking it from the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, so the motion is on the table. Report from committee?
Well, I think the committee certainly understood the, where Counselor Burson was coming from, and some of the committee members did agree with portions of this. It received a unanimous negative recommendation.
Counselor Mass, and then Counselor Burson? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. I think this one can just be a hands-up vote. All in favor, raise your hand, of the motion to increase the annual stipend to what's in the packet, which I believe is $15,000, but all in favor, raise your hand. Nobody's in favor? Okay. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, the motion fails. Counselor Wheeler?
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number FY20-53. amend the code of the city of Greenfield as written in the strike-through attached heretofore, Chapter 56, Article 7, stipend for school board members and city councillors, Section 18, annual stipend, effective January 1, 2023. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield, which was tabled at the October 16, 2019 City Council Meeting.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, it is taken from the table. Counselor Wheeler, recommendation from committee?
This received no recommendation, or rather, a split recommendation of two in favor, and two opposed with one abstention. There was much discussion, which I don't think that I will attempt to summarize here, because there were arguments on both sides, and clearly, we did not come to agreement.
So just a question for Counselor Dolan, this one is just for school committee and city councils, not for the mayor's salary. And do you want to speak too?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, this, it was actually a coincidence that these came up at the same time. I did not even know that Counselor Burson was preparing an ordinance on the same topic. So just to introduce this, this comes out of a significant amount of research. I contacted all of the town clerks in all of the similaritiesized communities that have a mayor and council form of government in Massachusetts, and kind of calculated some per capita averages that city councillors receive, and members of the school committee. And then I just adjusted that per capita up, so that Greenfield was in the middle of the range, instead of way below most of the other comparable communities. My intention here, and split... My intention here, and split votes seem to be the norm when it comes to this ordinance or this change. My intention is to further both diversity and democracy in the town. I think if we're compensating people for the, there is a significant amount of time and energy involved in both council and school committee positions. There's also a certain amount of opportunity cost associated with both positions in that that's time that could be spent in gainful employment somewhere else. So the idea is if we can compensate people a little more effectively, that would broaden the pool of folks that are able to serve in those roles. And I did some comparisons and there are several communities that do not compensate their city councillors. And unsurprisingly, the composition of those councils is almost entirely white. In terms of democracy, in our recent election, we had several council races that were uncontested and we barely found enough school committee members to fill the committee. So I think on both of those counts, I would like to make these positions more appealing to people. And this is one way that we can try to go about doing that. My goal is to have every race contested and for the people of Greenfield to have a real choice in the leadership. It's less of an issue on the council, but I do believe it's a significant issue particularly in this election with the school committee, which is why I also included the school committee in this particular change.
Vice President Ricketts?
Okay, I want to begin by just thanking Counselor Dolan for all of his work. Thank you for all the research that you did comparing us to other communities. And I do appreciate that you're looking out for the diversity of council in every way. So I guess I'll have to just start, being the token, I guess, that I started in Greenfield on school committee and the planning board on the Human Rights Commission. I have years of experience and I did it all gladly at no pay. When I finally ran for council, it was also at no pay. And then when the pay came up to what we get now, I voted no because it is what I really wanted to do. So now I understand all the work that goes into it. I take all my phone calls. I email everyone back. It is a lot of work. And still yet, I can't vote for this because I actually read those emails and I listen to everyone who comes up to me on the street. I know the library is a big celebration and at the same time, we still have a lot of the community who is upset by it because of their taxes. I know tonight, when I look at this agenda and I see what we just voted on and we're taking the fire department and we know we're moving forward and we have a large amount of this community who absolutely want a skate park, there is no way that I could vote to increase my salary at this time when there is so much that this community needs right now. And even though this is not coming for a couple of years, so is the fire station and library coming in a few years too. And it all has to be paid for. It's just not the time to take more money. And if I was even going to do this, I would want it to be tabled until the new councillors came on. They're the best people to ask because they are the people who did run and they ran at the old salary. They didn't even know that this would be happening and yet they were still there. So I came early because I wanted to hear from ways and means on all the topics that's on this agenda tonight. It's really important. It's important to me to go to all these other committee meetings, even if I'm not involved or I didn't put anything up. And so, yes, I understand it. I got out of the car today and threw $20 back in because my daughter brought me and this is going to be three nights in a row that I have to be out. But I still don't need more money for that. I just appreciate the time, something that I never thought I would ever need, transportation to go to council or anything. But this community, we all take care of each other and we all get by. I always get home from these meetings. No amount of money that I get paid is going to change any of that. So I do appreciate the time and I really hope that the council, in light of everything that we need to vote on, is going to be okay with increasing their stipend at this time. Let's give this some time. Let's get these other projects off the ground. We don't know how we're really going to financially end up on everything. And I'm sure this will come back if it doesn't get voted down. And if it does get voted up, I even have ideas for that because I look at all these reams of paper, just this week alone I got. And I would rather this money, this stipend, go to get some deal on tablets for all of us and get rid of all this paper that we get on a weekly basis because this is ridiculous and I think this is a huge part of the budget that we could make a dent in. Thank you.
Counselor, um, okay, I've been seeing different hands up. I saw Counselor Alice first.
I just have a question of our parliamentarian. This particular measure, if voted down, has a one-year restriction, is that correct? Thank you.
I'm going to go to Counselor Sun.
When I ran four years ago, I ran for because I wanted to help the town. I got one of the lowest incomes here as far as monthly. Now, when I got, I found out we were getting $2,000, I want to get, wanted to give it back to the town because I ran for because I like to, working for the town, working with the town, not getting money, but because I wanted to see the town go forward and not have more taxes paid. Because I've lived in Greenfield 71 years and I, I'd volunteer for anything for the town of Greenfield, no matter what it was. And even though I get voted up, I'll still be around trying to help the town out.
Counselor Burson?
The two most important things in my priority scheme is rampant income inequality and injustice. I don't think that paying people a living and decent wage for the work they perform or providing opportunity for new people to come into government or the system is not a good investment. Before we came into the meeting here tonight, I had approached the president and indicated that I wanted to withdraw the proposal or the ordinance that I submitted in connection with the mayor's salary. Do I believe the mayor and the superintendent should be on a even or close to even par in terms of their salary and the amount of responsibility they have? I do. There's, I think if we didn't have a mayor, we would need somebody such as a professional administrator who would probably be making in excess of $100,000 or more. We have been fortunate either by design or by luck to have people who have spent a great deal of their lives, their adult lives, serving this town, including the mayor, including the councilman to my left and to other councilmen here who spent half of their adult lives serving this town. And they are not going to be here any, any longer. Having, having said that, I think it's important for the community to make a statement in connection with who they value in regard to the jobs and tasks they want. I don't think that this measure, if enacted, is going to have much effect on the fire station. I don't think it's going to have much effect on any particular project. And the, and the idea, which is haunting me, that the paras in the, in the school system are getting $14.75 cents an hour, to me is, is an injustice. So I want to attract as many people into the system as possible. And if it takes a little money in order to accomplish that, it's not a shame to take some money to do a job which provides value to the community and also, and also connects you to your fellow, fellow residents. So I, I support this. I support this because I want the word to get out that we value the people here and we can enable other individuals, whether this money goes for childcare, transportation. And everybody doesn't have to be such a martyr about it that I, you know, I worked my entire life for nothing for the town of Greenfield, therefore we built the fire station. It doesn't, doesn't commute. The math doesn't commute. This amount of money is not going to make that kind of an impact. But what statement it makes to the rest of the, to the community and what kind of a city we are is, is very, very important. So I applaud Counselor Dolan for his efforts, for his research. And this is not without a rationale, but it is a purpose. It's a beginning to the question of valuing the work that we do in, in a very small way. It's a recognition. So I think we should recognize the people in the school committee who do this and we should recognize the councils who are going to go in and follow us. And we should, and we should reach out and begin to pay what is, what is a, a, really a contribution to their person's ability to be here and, and function.
Thank you, Counselor Burson. Counselor Stempel? I'm trying to remember whose hands were up before first and then Counselor Mass. Counselor Stempel, then Counselor Mass, then Counselor Wheeler.
Counselor Burson said the majority of what I was going to say and I really appreciate, this isn't, we don't need to throw ourselves and be a martyr and say X, Y, and Z, we're happy to do this for free because frankly, this is a lot of time that I, that we all spend away from our families, that we all, whatever. Like, did I run, I ran four years ago with no stipend at all and frankly, I didn't know that one was coming either. But that doesn't mean that there's somebody out there who wouldn't have the stipend be the deciding factor for why they run. So thank you for all of, all of the words and I think you both did valid work here. Frankly, the mayor piece, we are way below what we should be paying a mayor. It's ridiculous how far behind. We have a, we have a chief of police, a superintendent and a chief of fire who are paid more than the CEO of the town. It attracts quality. It attracts what, what the community deserves for expertise. That's something that needs to be taken care of. I support this because, you know what? It's 2023. I'm not doing this for me. No one's going to get friggin' rich on $4,000. It's going to be a penny an hour for the amount of work that we put forward to this town. I know that people are like, you don't come to meetings. I wasn't here last night because I had to go to work. I, I work in Boston and so I had to do work before so I can pay my bills, I can pay my taxes and I can pay my sewer bills. So if anyone wants to talk to me about not being at the meeting last night, please email me. I'd love to have that conversation with you. But yeah, I support this because we need, we need to say that we value this. We value representation, we value expertise and we value people's time.
Counselor Mass, Counselor Wheeler, Counselor Alice.
I want to speak from the heart on this issue. First, I want to say, Counsel Ricketts, in my view, you are not a token. You've worked very hard to be here and provide a great service to this community and I appreciate you being here. I am one of those members who spent half their adult life, Counsel Burson, on this body and will not be here in January. I ran for office because despite coming from an impoverished background, I was given tremendous opportunities. People in this community, whether it be educators, civic leaders, municipal officials, neighbors, gave a lot to me. They gave me advice, they gave me a hand up, point in the right direction, first job, those kinds of things that help people move from where they're at to where they're going to go. And I always felt it was my responsibility to give back to those people who gave to It has been my privilege to spend six terms on the Greenfield Town Council. It's been an honor. I've never felt unvalued. I've always felt valued by my constituents, by my peers, by my counterparts in the executive side. Even when we disagree, even when we're going at loggerheads with each other, I have always felt valued. No amount of money could make me return for another term. I could have, I could have run a writing campaign against Counselor Hirschfeld in Precinct 9. It's, you know, it could have been $50,000, I would not run. The money is not the factor. I'll tell you, I bought my house from Karen and David Taylor. Karen Taylor used to serve on the slate committee of the Democratic Town Committee and I served on the slate committee of the Republican Town Committee. This is back when we had partisan elections. We'd have our caucuses, which saved the town's $10,000 every year because we didn't have to have a preliminary election. It'd be nice to go back to that. And after those caucuses, we'd get on the phone and talk to each other and I'd talk to Carolyn, "Do you have enough candidates for school committee?" And she'd say, "No." And I, she'd say, "Do you have enough candidates for school committee?" And I'd say, "No." And we would work together to find candidates for school committee, even though we were ideologically opposed. And that is because being a school committee member is a difficult task and it appeals to a particular type of person. Usually those people are people with children or, or people from an education background and those people tend to be incredibly busy people. For them, it's not about money, it's about time. And, and time can buy some money. Some money can buy some time. But the difference between $4,000 and, and $2,000, I don't think, or $2,500 is, is not going to make a difference on whether or not someone can serve on school committee. I value the people who serve on PTOs. I value the people who serve on school councils. I value the people who serve on our planning board and zoning board of appeals and Human Rights Commission and our license commission and the Public Safety Commission and thou, really dozens and dozens of committees where people put in a lot of work and I value them. And money is not always the way we show our value. A kind word, appreciation, a pat on the back, "Thank you for doing the good job," that can mean far more than $2,000. I would much rather have someone in the grocery store say, "Hey, thank you for the hard work you're doing, even though I disagree with you, you know, I see what you're doing." And I've had that happen to me hundreds of times. Sometimes they even agree with me. But that is the value that I have. But that is the value that I have appreciated, and I think that is the kind of value that the people who we want running for office, we want them to want. We don't want them to be doing this for the compensation. And for that reason, while I appreciate, and I, I can't say enough about Councilor Dolan and the hard work he put into this, and I think you're right on the facts about where the, where the numbers are. I, I do. I, I'm not going to be able to support this tonight, but I appreciate it, and I appreciate all of my other colleagues and all of the hard work that they do for any amount of money.
Council Wheeler, then Councilor Alice.
Thank you, President Reno. I'm not going to make an impassioned speech, even though that's what you pay me for. I'm kidding. I actually really appreciated all of your speeches, and I could make an impassioned one, but I have a couple of questions. The first is actually for the parliamentarian. My understanding is that currently the charter requires four years before a change like this could be enacted. And there's a, there's a provision in here that would, that would make it less than four years. Am I correct that the charter would override? And, and feel free to look, nope. That's what I meant to say. Yes. So that's, that's a language issue. From my standpoint, I feel uninformed around the school committee aspect of this. I don't know how much time school committee members put in, and I would want to know that before I, before I voted on this. I think that even though I, I support this in spirit, I would need a really, really spirited conversation around it, which, which we're having. But I think that I would need even more. I think I would need public comment. I think that if it were me, I would be much more inclined to support this if it came along at the same time as a proposal from the Charter Review Committee to reduce the size of the council because that would be an easier hit to the, to the city's budget. So I'm kind of thinking out loud here, and just so people know, know where I'm at. I think you could guess that I'm, that I'm inclined to support this, but there's a lot of real details that, that mean that I'm not there as of now.
Councilor Alice, and then Councilor Dolan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to be as impassioned as Councilor Mass. I'm going to save that for next month. But I will say, we talk about value, and I do not value what I do here based on what I'm paid. Because if I did that, I, I wouldn't be here. I mean, you just, you can't value what we do at really any amount of money. And the reality is, as I said, in Ways and Means, if I was here in four years when this took effect, four thousand dollars doesn't make me any smarter. It doesn't make me any different. I'm going to be what I'm going to be in four years. And I just don't agree that we should suggest that four thousand is more value for what we're getting because we're all here to do a job, and we all do that job. And a lot of us have done it for nothing. Some of us have done it for two thousand. Some, depending on how this goes, may do it for four thousand. The point is, we're all the same people, whether it's zero, two thousand, or four thousand. The amount of money has never been a factor of whether I would go to a meeting or take on a task. I value the hard-earned money in the pockets of the residents who would have to fund that few pennies, as some people would like to call it, or some people, whatever you want to say, however much you want to say that it is. I value that money for those people to do with what they choose to do. We will likely set a tax rate tonight that is two hundred and eighty-eight dollars more than it was last fiscal year for the average single-family home. And I just cannot set that tax rate, potentially tax people even more on a CPA or vote to send it to them, to ask them if they want to pay more. I guess is more appropriate. And then vote to give a hundred percent raise to counselors. And that's, that's really where I stand on this. I, I've, I value the work, and I value the camaraderie, even if we disagree sometimes. I, I value the lessons that I've learned. I value everything about this. And that value can't have a price tag because it wouldn't mean anything to me if it had two thousand more dollars. The money is not what this is about. So I will not be voting for this. Thank you.
Council Dolan?
I would like to take Councilor Wheeler's suggested as a friendly amendment and amend where it says 2021 to 2022, if that's all right.
I thought it said 2023.
Twenty twenty-four is what I would like that to be. I think it's just been a while since I drafted it.
So you accept 2024 as a friendly amendment. Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Clerk, Council Gilmore.
I don't want to take up a lot of time. I just want to say I voted for this at A&amp;O when this was before us. And I think I'm changing my vote. I think I'm going to vote against it, and it's not anything wrong with the ordinance. And I, I do want to support it for all the reasons that you outlined. But I'm really concerned about some of the expenses that are coming up, and especially with our, our paras not having their contracts funded right now. And some of the concerns that I've heard from residents about their tax bills. I don't want this to just die. I want to have this conversation because I think that it's important, but I think right now I can't make myself vote for it. So I apologize.
Council Dolan?
I'm fine voting on this tonight if that's what counselors would like to do, but if we would like to have more of a conversation, then a motion to table would be appropriate.
Council Wheeler?
As someone who is going to abstain based on the information that we have before us, I'll make that motion to table at this time.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, the mo- all opposed? Okay, so it is tabled. Councilor Wheeler?
Ordered that the Greenfield City Council approve the payment of prior year FY19 invoice for ParTech Solutions in the amount of two thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars, sixty-four cents to be paid from the FY20 Parking Department budget.
You skipped the big one, Council Wheeler.
Oh, yeah. I did the same, I did the same thing at, did the same thing at Ways and Means. I'm sorry. Apparently, I don't want to set the tax rate. Moving, moving back. I, I know. All right. Moved that it be ordered, the Greenfield City Council votes in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Fifty-Six, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy, which will, will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2020 tax rates, and set the residential factor at one with a corresponding commercial, industrial, and personal property SIP shift of one pending approval of the city's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
Unanimous positive recommendation.
Is there any discussion? Council Gilmore?
Last night, when we were listening and talking about setting the tax rate, there was a recommendation that we have a one-to-one factor because businesses haven't had a chance to weigh in. I remember we talked about this last year and the year before and the year before that, and the excuse has always been that the businesses haven't had a chance to weigh in. So I would like to table this until next month. Let the business owners in town weigh in because I would like to look at a split tax, and I want to make sure that if we're doing that, we're doing it wisely.
So is that a motion to table?
Yes, please.
Is there a second? Okay, raise your hands for this one. All in favor of tabling? Raise your hand. Opposed? And abst- any abstentions? One abstention. Okay, so we're going to continue the discussion. There is no tabling. Council Mass? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so on the motion that is on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We still have to go through the exemptions, I believe, even though we did a one-to-one. Council Wheeler?
Moved that it be ordered that the city council votes that no residential exemption be adopted for fiscal year 2020.
Any discussion?
Report from committee again was a unanimous positive recommendation in favor of no residential exemption.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Council Wheeler?
That the city council votes that no small commercial exemption be adopted for fiscal year 2020.
Second? Report from committee?
Unanimous positive recommendation not to adopt a small commercial exemption.
Okay, is any, any other conversation? Council Stempel?
I just, for all of this, I, I understand the sentiment of Councilor Gilmore, but I just feel like a month before we need to move forward, all this isn't the time to bring the businesses in for a discussion. Last year, and I think the year before, we had pretty good discussion on this. And so if that's something you're interested in doing, then I would perhaps move it for 2020.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Council Wheeler?
Ordered that the Greenfield City Council approve the payment of prior year FY19 invoice for ParTech Solutions in the amount of two thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars, sixty-four cents to be paid from the FY20 Parking Department budget.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
This was a unanimous positive, although I believe only four of us were here at the time. Just to, I guess, summarize my understanding is an invoice was sent through email. It went to a spam folder. And that policies are being, hopefully being put into place so that purchase orders are, are now required, which would keep something like this from happening again in the future.
Any other conversation? Council Alice?
Considering that one of our counselors is now out of the room, I think it would behoove us to wait on voting on this. Considering it requires every single person here to vote yes, with one person missing.
Council Stempel?
I just have a question in terms of the impact on the parking. Is it come parking department? Oh, so it's right, but it's coming from the Parking Department budget, and so that's where it would come from? Okay.
Is there any other discussion? I'm trying to stall, as you can see, without calling a bathroom break because we're in the middle of a motion. Council Mass?
Madam President, maybe we can inquire. Normally, I'm the no vote on these late bill motions. I'm inclined to vote for this. This is actually probably had one of the better explanations I've heard for a late bill and a solution in place to prevent it in the future, so I'm pretty impressed by that. If, if there's concern about me being the only no, there's no reason to hold. If there's a concern about someone else, then I certainly, we could delay even further.
Council Alice?
My concern is only that if we vote on it and there is a problem, we have a problem. So I, now that, I think we'll be able to vote.
Yep, problem solved. Okay. Well, seeing since there's no other discussion.
Call for a, call for a roll call vote.
I think he was kidding. Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Sun? Counselor Burson? Counselor Alice? Counselor Pythrum? Counselor Dolan? Counselor Gilmore? Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel? Counselor Sun? Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes. Motion carries. That's okay. I know, yeah, I know, I know. There are no lights over there. What's going on? Council Wheeler, page fifty-two.
Ordered that, upon recommendation of the mayor, the following borrowing authorities totaling six million, six hundred eight thousand, six hundred nine dollars be rescinded. Green River School, windows and roof. Amount authorized, two million, three hundred forty thousand, one hundred nine dollars. Amount issued, six hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Unissued, one million, six hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred nine dollars. Federal Street School, amount authorized, five million, seven hundred fifty thousand. Amount issued, eight hundred thousand. Unissued, four million, nine hundred fifty thousand. Total unissued, six million, six hundred eight thousand, six hundred nine dollars.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
This was a unanimous positive recommendation.
Is there any discussion? Council Alice?
As I stated in Ways and Means, which I said for the viewing public, but we weren't on TV, so there you have it. We are now on TV. This is not found money. The six point six million dollars is not money we can now go and spend on other things. This is money that we did not spend, that we do not need to borrow. I just wanted people to be aware of that so that we don't have anyone thinking we can spend six point six million dollars on something else. Thank you.
Any other, anybody else want to speak? Okay, seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The motion carries. I think this is Council Wheeler again.
Ordered that the city council approve a twenty-year term for the Millbrook Well Field Solar Project with GTR Greenfield Millbrook Solar LLC.
Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
This was tabled because there's, the committee members have not seen a contract. And so committee members, a committee member requested that it's within our authority as council to, to see a contract before we vote on anything if it lasts over three years. So we made, we tabled making any recommendation at this time.
Council Alice?
Yeah, I would make a motion to table until such time as we've had thirty days to review the contract.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Council Wheeler?
Point of order, I guess, to, should I read the, the motion that is before us here, or may I read the motion as recommended in committee?
I believe we should read the one that's here, and then we can make the amendments on the floor.
Thank you. Moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-Four B, Community Preservation, Section Three, Acceptance of Sections Three to Seven as Attached, Exhibit A. attached, Exhibit A. Is there, should I read Exhibit A?
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Report from committee?
This was a split positive recommendation with three in favor and two opposed to approve an amended motion.
Do you wish to make the amendments now?
Yes, I do. I move to amend, just give me a second to find the language. Move to amend the motion as follows. Ordered that the City of Greenfield hereby accept Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, acquisition, creation, and preservation, rehabilitation, restoration of historic resources, acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation, restoration of such open space and community housing that is required or created as provided under said act. That the amount of such surcharge on real property shall be 1% of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing in fiscal year 2022, and that the city hereby accepts the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3E of said act. Property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or low or moderate senior income, senior housing in the city as defined in Section 2 of said act, for $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property, and for $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class III commercial property and Class IV industrial property as defined in Section 2A of said Chapter 59. And I have the text of that for the clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so amendment to the motion's been made and seconded. I would just like to speak that I think it's, this would go to the voters, and I think it'd be much easier to start at a 1% rate than a 3%, and we will have, after we get through this amendment vote, then we will have time to talk on the overall Community Preservation Act, and whether or not this council wishes to send it to the voters or not. But I would say the 1% is a better way to go. So is there any other discussion on the amendment to the motion before we get to the main motion? Counselor Gilmore?
I just want to clarify what was the difference between the amendment and the original language. I was trying to find it as he was reading.
It was 3%, and it went down to 1%.
Clarification. Both the original version and the amended version identified exemptions 1, 3, and 4, so that has not changed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, the amendment to the motion carries. So now we have 1%, and I, because it was mine that I brought to the City Council, I'd like to speak on it a little bit, just to, you know, go through why and what it is. And so, I know that folks have probably read the material, but Community Preservation Act has been recommended, but it's on our master plan, and as well as on the Greenfield Affordable Housing Project, which went through a year-long study of the problems with affordable housing in Greenfield. So that's part of one of the whys. Over half the cities in the state of Massachusetts, since this was enacted in the year 2001, have opted in and become a community preservation city or municipality. And what it is, it's that it's a surcharge on your tax, your tax bill. So it's a percentage of your tax bill that you pay into a fund, and that money can only be used for certain purposes. And the committee that decides what that fund is used for is called the Community Preservation Committee. And that committee is actually, it's the City Council that creates that committee. It's five to nine people. And there are some, some people on the committee have to be from like the Conservation Commission and from various commissions, but then there's at-large people that are on the committee. The benefits of being a CPA city or town is that every year, like for instance, every city or town that was part of CPA got 14% back from the state, right off the top, of funds from the state. And then depending on how much you contribute to the fund, at 3%, you get a lot more back than you would at 1%. But it's a way, it gives you access to grants and funding, and it reserves those funds for either the preservation of, historic preservation, open space preservation, recreation, and affordable housing. So one of the things I think is most important is to have a fund that is, that can be put aside just for affordable housing. And through that, you can create a trust fund, or you can, you know, join with the Greenfield Housing Authority and give money towards something that's already there. But there's a process for all of it. The main thing is that this has to be voted on by the citizens of Greenfield, and that can only happen in a November election. We cannot set a special election for that to happen, so it gives us about a year. Well, I wouldn't say us. I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can campaign for it if you're on the City Council, so me and other people, and those who are opposed to it, who are no longer on the City Council, to campaign either for or against it, and to let citizens know exactly what this is about. But I think, you know, seeing that two major bodies, especially the Master Planning Committee, has recommended it. It's been out there now for about 18 years, and we haven't, we haven't taken part in it. I think it's really important that we take part in this, and I think the time is now. I don't think, I don't see a reason to wait. That's my overview. Counsel of Mass?
My biggest problem with the Community Preservation Act is it's not funded by the legislature. It's another one of those unfunded mandate, unfunded programs, they say, like regional school choice, regional, regional school transportation. They say, "We're going to fund you 100%," and they don't fund it. And then they say, "School of Choice, we're going to fund you", and they don't fund it. This is one of those things, they make a promise and they don't carry through. And so the promise just is never realized. But my fundamental issue is I just don't believe, because it's so far out, a year out, I think it's, I think it's inappropriate for a lame duck legislative session to be putting a binding ballot question on to a November ballot a year, year out, when there's going to be a new council and a new mayor to consider whether or not to veto it. The next, next mayor, the current mayor, if I had to guess, would probably veto this provision. So if I wanted, I'd probably vote, vote it tonight and hope to not have the votes to override. But, and then the next council would have to wait nine months to take it up. The, I think, and I don't know what the new mayor would do as far as whether she would veto this or not. In any case, I think this is a decision that the new council should be making, and for that purpose, I would move to table to a date certain, to January 2020. Regular full council meeting.
Okay, motion's been made to table and has been seconded. All in favor? Could you raise your hand if you're in favor? Okay, it's tabled. What was the date, Counsel of Mass, that you wanted to?
Regular full council meeting, 2020. Jan- January 2020.
Counselor Gilmore?
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council, sorry, the Greenfield City Charter, Article 7, Section 7-8, Citizen Referendum Procedure, Subsection A, be amended by inserting of any measure in subsection A to read as follows. You want me to read the whole thing?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
After months and months of discussing this and talking about different ways that we may want to improve this language, we decided in the end that we are just going to add of any measure for the time being. Next year, people are going to be looking at the City Charter, and they will have an opportunity to make those amendments if necessary. So for now, it was a positive, unanimous positive recommendation. Keep it unamended.
Any other discussion? Counsel Wheeler?
I agree with the, the A&amp;O Committee's decision. I think it makes forward to move forward like this. But I would point out that the comma that got us into so much trouble in the first place is still there. So after the words "has voted to approve, comma, of any measure," my understanding is that that comma is probably what caused the legislature to misunderstand the intent of this.
Counselor Gilmore?
So, as a point of order, when we make amendments like this, I do believe that somebody goes through and cleans up the grammar, correct? No? In that case, I would take that, the removal of that comma as a friendly amendment?
Okay. Counselor of Mass?
I don't have a problem with this change, just so we're clear. But my, my problem is that this section still remains a mess and needs to be clarified. And we are actively engaged in litigation, still related to this section, and I think it makes sense that the appropriate action in this, this body is to have everything looked at in the Charter Review Commission. I'm not going to oppose it, but I'm inclined to table to, to the Charter Review, to send this to the Charter Review Commission. If everyone wants to go today, I'm not going to stand in the way. But it's not, it's not going to go out any faster, because we send charter changes in batches, and we're not going to send a three-word charter change off to the legislature, I'm pretty sure.
I'm just going to let the mayor speak to this for a second.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselors, we've just heard today that there is going to be a withdrawal of, with prejudice from the most recent challenge to that section in our charter. But that's three hours old.
Counselor Dolan?
I agree with Counselor Mass on this one. I think, this, this has been at A&amp;O for a number of months, and I was, I guess, expecting a more substantial change. I think the, part of the issue that got us into this, part of the issue that we should be trying to address is the extremely low bar of the citizens' referendum. And I'm disappointed to not see that taken care of. I think we had an opportunity to look at this in a comprehensive way, and I'm disappointed that we didn't make some more comprehensive changes.
Just for clarification, this used to be 5%, and we've already raised it to 10%. So talking about the low bar, and I think A&amp;O put in a lot of work, and so I don't, there was, there are people who had a lot of input for this, and this is just to clear up this one portion of it. So I appreciate the work that A&amp;O did on this. Counselor Alice?
Just wanted to, just mention that I would be willing to bet that even if we vote this, it would not likely go to the state legislature until the Charter Review Committee was done, because the legislature does not like, would not like to get this on its own to have to vote on. Typically, we lump them all together and send them in, so I would, I would suggest that the Charter Review Committee is the, is the proper place to make some, make the changes to this that may seem necessary. I would also point out that President Reno is correct, that the bar was raised from 5 to 10%, and that the citizens of Greenfield and all of the registered voters of Greenfield have the option to raise the bar at any given point by voting in the biennial election. For example, any referendum procedure that wished, or that any citizen wished to do now would require 570-something signatures versus the 370 that it required the last time. So the citizens and the voters are truly the people who set the bar for this very section based on their right and their duty to vote in an election. So, just making that point. And I think that we should probably let this go to the Charter Review Committee, because legislature probably won't even take this up if we send it just this one measure.
So there is another charter amendment that has been passed to the police to remove them from civil service, and the intention was to send this and that one at the same time, just for your knowledge?
I stand corrected.
Counselor Gilmore?
If you don't mind, I would like to ask Clerk Scott a question, because I was really under the impression going into this that this was required, that we had to take this up. And I would really feel bad if my committee put that much time into something just to have everybody say we're going to wait until next year, because I didn't think that this was optional. There was a question in there somewhere. Is this optional, or do, I believe we have to do this, correct? So you're not required to do this. This amendment would correct the Scrivener's error that was discovered by a citizen earlier in the year. And the Scrivener's error was made during the state process. This language before you is the vote that was taken by the council in 2016, including this language. So it's simply requesting the legislature to correct the error that was made. Yes, sir.
Counselor Stempel?
Just a question. Who serves on the Charter Committee, Review Committee? I don't think that has been determined yet.
Counselor Alice?
It's, it's formed when it's necessary, and a year ending in zero. Real quick, can you refresh, can somebody refresh my memory on the vote that we took to ratify the vote that we took in 2016? Does that not, it did not pass? Okay, then that's why I'm confused. Okay, so, gotcha. So I guess, had we done that, we probably wouldn't be here today. Okay, thank you.
Ready to vote? Counselor Burson?
It would appear to me, since legislature apparently made this mistake, that this particular measure before them might have a little more impetus than something that was fresh, new, and different. So we're just asking them to correct, and as a result of that correction, look what we, look what we have undergone. You know, there's a, there's a kind of subset of this, that if the, that if the challenge to the charter was before the court, and now that case is dismissed, in some ways, it sort of codifies this. But we won't, we won't, we won't go there. That's just my head working. But in, in any, in any event, I, I think we should go forward and, and, and do this and be on record. And frankly, I feel that the legislature ought to be told that they ought to watch it a little more carefully than they have in the past.
Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Point of inquiry. Was that without the comma or with the comma?
Without.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilmore?
City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 accept the following appointments by the mayor. Jonathan Cohen Gorsucha, Public Library Board of Trustees- Jonathan Cohen Gorsika, Public Library Board of Trustees, remainder of a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2020. Travis Drury, Greenfield Conservation Committee, remainder of three-year term to expire June 30th, 2020. Taffia Gary, Recreation Committee, remainder of three-year term to expire December 31st, 2021. Adrian Lapierre, Greenfield Cultural District Committee, term to expire when the project is complete.
Just for a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Counselor Stempel?
The City Council moved that it be ordered to adopt the resolution authorizing this, to adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of local incentive-only application and special tax assessment agreement for 401 Liberty Street LLC to the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council for the review and approval and to waive the reading of the resolution.
Report from committee?
This was a unanimous positive, but at this time, I'm actually going to move to table. Reasoning be it that we discovered in order to move this forward to the economic review council, or the coordinating council, we need to have the current tax assessment. And as part of that tax assessment, we need to include the assessment for the MAR rebuilding, which currently is not included. And that's the building that the entity, Liberty Street, owns. So we've been requested from Director Adams to table this until December when we can have that tax assessed value packaged in. And that's because the current tax assessment is important to the special tax assessment, whereas the TIF is, it renders the improvement versus the full assessment. So a really long way of saying, I moved to table this until December.
Okay. Motion to table has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion is tabled. Counselor Stempel?
The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to accept a portion of watered road as a public way of the city of Greenfield, ordered that pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 82, that the city of Greenfield has laid out a portion of watered road, a county way to be discontinued by the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, a successor to the Franklin County Commission, and being between watered roads northerly intersection with Route 2A Mohawk Trail and a southerly intersection with Shelburne Road. See plan of land titles, Plan of 2019, affixed hereto, and which has been filed with the city clerk seven days prior to this meeting, and which shall be recorded in the Franklin County Registry of Deeds within 30 days thereafter. That the city of Greenfield shall accept the above, excuse me, the above said portion of watered road laid out in said plan as a public way of the city of Greenfield.
Motion's been made in second. A report from committee?
I believe this was unanimous positive.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes, I may have, again, I had a medical appointment last night. I couldn't make it to the meeting. So I guess my question for this is, it shows that the city, it says the city laid out this road. Is this, did the city lay this out or is this a developer that laid it out to put in for what was going in to that end of the street? I'm just curious. Do we know that answer?
I believe, does...
The mayor's coming up.
May I, please?
The city paid for and contracted a surveyor engineer to lay it out. That's for both of them, watered road and the Court Square.
Thank you. I guess I'm curious, we have, we've had constituents that have consistently asked for their roads that are currently non-conforming to be accepted by the city. And the city consistently, and I've been a part of this body all of those times, has said that we require the owners to upgrade the roads and lay out the roads and construct the roads before we will accept them as public ways and pave and plow and collect trash to the end of them. So I'm curious why watered road is different. And I don't know if there's some special consideration for this one. Court Square, I could understand because that's, the only people wanted are basically the city hall. So I'm curious what the, what the difference may be. And that's directed to you, President Reno, if you want to have that answered.
Neil Martin?
Yes, Counselor. The, the process for petitioning the county, for the county roads to be discontinued and turned over to the city is that we present the surveyed area to be discontinued and turned over to the city. So right now, all those roads are owned by the city. Many of them, those two particular pieces are owned by the county. And now petitioning, the Executive Committee of the Franklin County Council of Governments has approved the transfer. The next step is to sign the my allowance and approve it with the counselors this evening. And we have many roads in town that we take care of, not necessarily have accepted, but are all owned by the county.
Should we ask the mayor another question?
Just a, maybe I'm going to be, this is, this is an existing current road. This is not to extend the road. Because I know that the road sort of ends and then starts again. You have to go around. Is this, are we constructing new road or are we just accepting what's there?
We're just accepting what's there.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I misunderstood the plan.
And then the higher body, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, took what they wanted and that's how they ended up with it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Counselor Stempel?
The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to accept a portion of Court Square as a public way of the city of Greenfield, be ordered that pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 82, that the city of Greenfield has laid out a portion of a road commonly referred to as Court Square adjacent to Bank Row, Main Street, and Newton Place, which is a county way to be discontinued by the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, a successor to the Franklin County Commission, and designated as a partial, as parcel A on a plan, a plan of land, plan of land titled, Plan of Land Prepared for the City of Greenfield Located in Greenfield, Massachusetts, prepared by Daniel L. Werner, PLS, and dated September 4th, 2019, affixed hereto, a copy which was filed with the city clerk more than seven days prior to this meeting on October 30th, 2019, and which shall be recorded in the Franklin County Registry of Dees within 30 days thereafter. That the city of Greenfield shall accept the above said portion of Court Square laid out in said plan as a public way of the city of Greenfield.
Report from committee?
Positive, unanimous. This is obviously, I believe we discovered that we didn't actually, I guess, own this, this parcel of land. And obviously, we should since, as my colleague said, that this is where primarily it's Town Hall, it's the common, and yeah, it's important for us to have that under our belt.
Counselor Ellis?
It is my hope that we take this. It is my hope that we maintain it as a road. It is my hope that we do not close it without significant study and traffic designs to create an easier mode of access on that particular corner dubbed on Facebook as the longest lights in the world. So I hope that we keep this particular road open to traffic.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Counselor Stempel?
The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council declares real estate off Cumberland Road, aka Old County Road, being shown on Assessor's Map R41 Block 9A to be surplus property and transfers said, transfers said property to the mayor for sale.
Second? Report from committee?
Also a unanimous positive recommendation.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions and similar papers. Oh, wait a second. Where are they? Oh, I'm sorry. There's a second motion on, related to the motion that...
Oh, yes, yep. Almost there, okay. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council authorizes the mayor to sell real estate off Cumberland, off of Cumberland Road, aka Old County Road, Assessor's Map R41 Block 9A pursuant to the City Council policy for the sale of city-owned land, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the same.
Report from committee?
Also a unanimous positive recommendation.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions and similar papers. Anybody want to do a report of their committee? Nope? Unfinished business? Old business, unfinished business.
I just, report of committee. Tomorrow at 6:00 PM, the EDC Committee, as well as the Planning Board, has our joint public hearing for the zoning recommendations put forth by the planning, by the planning board. So I believe that's here? Here tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
Okay, unfinished business? Old business? I just want to say that I'm incredibly disappointed that the GPA got tabled tonight to a time in which I won't even be on the council to vote for it. And that my term is until January 1st, 2020. And whether you call it a lame duck or not, I intend to continue submitting items to be voted on. And I did put a lot of work into it and I feel a little bit cut out from the knees that it, that it was approved to table until that date without even giving me a chance to make a fight for it. And I just wanted to say that. And I don't see why we should stop submitting things just because we're in this period that is called a lame duck session between the time when new people got elected and new people are coming in. Other counselors will continue to bring things forward. I'm not going to brush them off just because they're leaving office. So with that said, new business? Counselor Burson?
I am mindful of the article that appeared today in the, in the paper in connection with... In connection with the, the school committee and the apparent divide between regionalization and the possibility of shared services. For my part, from my short tenure here, but it would obviously appear that the monies that are spent on the schools have to be looked at very, very, very carefully. So I would suggest, by way of new business, that there be a, essentially a committee, a commission, a joint board between the school committee and the council in order to better understand the differences between regionalization and shared services. Because this is, I think, a significant fiscal matter going, going forward, given, given the status of the enrollment and my understanding, the underutilization of the, of the high school. So there has to be some forum for discussion where we, we understand what it means to consolidate, to regionalize, or to shared services. And the sooner that happens with a new school committee, the better off, I think, the people of the town will be.
Counsel Wheeler?
In consideration and respect for what you said, President Reno, I'd like to take the Community Preservation Act off the table so that I may change my vote.
Yes, Counselor Mass?
The vote of the council was to table to a date certain. No action going to be taken to take it off the table until that date certain.
He's right. Counsel Wheeler?
Am I incorrect? I thought that counselors were allowed to change their votes at the meeting at which the vote was taken.
Point of order. Madam President, I believe the rule allows counselor, this is under our rules of procedure, not under Roberts' rules, allows counselors to change their vote until the vote, the result of the vote is announced.
Can we have just a minute? You can talk amongst yourselves. Counselor Mass is correct. Thank you, Counsel Wheeler. We can't do anything.
Point of, point of order. We waived the rule, we waived, we moved to waive the rules of procedure. Does, does that change anything?
I think our parliamentarian was saying it is a parliamentarian rule.
Point of order.
Somewhat, our parliamentarians said that there can be a move to overrule the chair, that would be me. And if that is voted on and a majority vote, then you can take, you can reconsider your vote. Counselor Mass?
Move to adjourn.
We have first readings. We can adjourn. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Abstain? Motion fails. So is everybody, Counselor Dolan?
I would like to make a motion to reconsider on the same subject.
So the, the way it stands right now is that you would have to make a motion to override the chair. And that would be me because I announced, I announced the outcome of the vote and I announced it as being tabled. So the only way to reconsider and...
My understanding and past practice is that you can move to reconsider a vote.
So I would like to move to reconsider the vote to table.
Point of order.
Counselor Mass?
Am I correct that our rules of procedure require motions for reconsideration to be taken up at the next full council meeting?
We waive the rules of procedure.
Within the 30-day day, yeah. So we waive the rules, I believe we waive the rules of procedure for the intent of eliminating the first portion of the meeting, not to fully waive every rule of procedure. We waive on a specific purpose.
Hang on one second. So reconsideration, unless otherwise provided by the charter, after a vote has been taken, shall be in order for any member voting with the prevailing side to move reconsideration thereof at the same meeting at which the vote was taken, or to file with the clerk written notice of a motion to reconsider, not later than 3:00 PM, the second business day following the meeting. So it can't happen. So there's a motion to reconsider, is there a second? So, there's a motion to reconsider, is there a second? Okay, so the motion is to reconsider the tabling, so I will call the vote, who wishes to table, so that you can reconsider your vote? Who wishes to table the CPA to a date certain?
Could you clarify?
Yeah, clarify.
Okay, we're just voting to reconsider. Okay. So, who wishes to, so this is on the CPA, who wishes to reconsider? One, two, three, four, five, and I'm a yes. So, the motion passes by majority, so...
Madam President?
The CPA is, I'm not recognizing you yet.
Point of order.
Yes, Counselor Mouse.
I, I believe what's on the table now is a motion to table, the, the motion on the CPA, and we need to vote on that.
We're reconsidering the table.
You voted to take, you voted to take it.
Okay.
Now you have to reconsider a motion.
So, now we vote?
The main motion.
Okay, so the main motion, the main motion was to table. All in favor of tabling? Raise your hand. All opposed? So, now it's off the table. I want to thank the councilors for giving this a second chance and listening to what I had to say. I am completely open to tabling until next month. I don't want to table until 2020. If folks think they need more time, it's already late in the night, I would be, I would, I'm fine for a motion to table until next month. Counselor Gilmore?
I would be happy to vote for this tonight, except I recognize that there are some people who are disappointed because they thought that this was going to be tabled for such a long term. So, in that spirit, I would like to table until December so that cooler heads can prevail, and we can come back and discuss this.
Second.
Motion to table has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion carries. Again, thank you very much, appreciate it. And we just have a couple first readings.
City Council First Reading, November 20, 2019. Appropriate $36,423 to replace heating system for the Police Department. Appropriate $150,000 for a library feasibility study.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Adjourned.